Chair Dickies. So the first item on our agenda is a report from you on our Regional and Corporate Services Committee meeting held this morning.
Good, thank you. We had a very quick meeting this morning. We had a very rapid discussion on the new animal control regulations. And then we moved on to talking about the recycling five-year action plan. For information only item. There was some discussion around the need for more responsibility by manufacturers on plastic packaging. And also on the agricultural and manufacturing of consumer items. And finally, we had a brief discussion about Metro Vancouver Regional Growth Strategy. That was pretty much, I think it was about a 10 or 15 minute meeting, so. So that's my update on on Racks and I'll turn things back to Ms. Kinaman.
Thank you Chair Dickie. So looking for approval of the agenda, agenda and late items. And I would just note that we are removing item 6.1 from the agenda. This item was inadvertently added as it was brought forward from last month, but it actually wasn't ready to go forward. So please just strike that from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We're looking for motion. Move Director Adamson, second Director Dixon. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
Item 4.1, we have the draft Electoral Area Services Committee meeting minutes of September 9th, 2021.
For motion, move Director Adamson, second Director Stobart. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
5.1 is a 2021 grant and aid request for the Chilliwack River Valley Residents Association and Electoral Area E.
For motion, move Director Angar, second Director Bales. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
5.2, 2021 grant and aid request for the Hope Mountains Center for Outdoor Learning Society and Electoral Area B.
Move.
Second Director Dixon. Dixon, yeah, any discussion? Director Adamson, go ahead.
Yeah, this group Hope Mountain Center, they do a lot of work on the trails and cleaning up. So what we're doing is giving them some money to help get rid of the waste that they gather. So I think it's a great, great thing.
Good. Thank you Director Adamson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
5.3 is a grant and aid request for the Post Creek Rate Pairs Association and Electoral Area E.
So moved.
Move Director Angar, second Director Bales. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
5.4 is a grant and aid request for the Cultus Lake Community School Association and Electoral Area H.
Move Dixon.
Move Director Dixon, second Director Adamson. Any discussion?
Dixon.
Go ahead Director Dixon.
Well, I'm just looking, I actually am supportive of this. I think it's a great opportunity. And it's probably way too late to ask this question, but I'm going to anyway. Is is this the type of thing that could actually come out of the COVID relief fund? As opposed to my regular grant and aid budget? Because, and and I said, I realize it's way too late, so it's all right if it if that's a hard no. But this, these programs were shut down during COVID. And I just looking at it right now, I just sort of realized that if that was an opportunity or not.
Through the chair to Director Dickey, or sorry, to Director Dixon. Certainly, the intention behind having the COVID relief funds was to provide funding to the community groups that were suffering through COVID. I'm not entirely certain what the balance is for Electoral Area H in that in that portion of the COVID funding for your grants and aid. But but certainly, you know, I don't think it's too late. I think that this is just a matter of which balance that staff would be drawing down from. And I see nods coming from Ms. Lonsborough and from Ms. Klein. So certainly, if that's your preference, we could certainly use the funds from that area.
Yes, actually, it would be if that's possible. So thank you for that. And sorry for the slow, slow take on that.
Good. Thank you Director Dixon. So is that meaning that we're going to pull it from the grant and aid? Or we can move forward as is?
We can move forward as is Chair Dickie. All of these funds were put into that grant and aid section. So that's fine. Staff can just work with that.
Great. Okay, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
5.5 is a grant and aid for the District of Hope Rate Pairs Association and Electoral Area B.
For motion, move Director Adamson, second Director Dixon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
6.2 is zoning amendment application for 10228 Stave Lake Road in Electoral Area F to facilitate a proposed two-lot subdivision. There is a motion for your consideration.
Okay, looking for motion, Director Davidson. Davidson moves, second Director Adamson. Discussion.
Davidson.
Go ahead Director Davidson.
Uh, thank you Chair. So I appreciate staff drawing attention to the uniqueness of this particular subdivision. Or sorry, zoning amendment application. But it should definitely go forward to the public for the comment. So I support motion. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you Director Davidson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
Uh, 6.3, we have development variance permit 2021-17 to reduce the exterior lot line setbacks for an accessory structure at 44191 Bayview Road in Electoral Area C.
Hey, for motion. Director Bales, you're muted, but I'm assuming that you're moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion moved by Director Bale, second Director Adamson. Any discussion? Director Bales?
Just that I support the staff recommendation.
Good. Thank you Director Bales. All in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
6.4 is approval for strata title conversion of a previously occupied duplex at 20921 Snowflake Crescent in Electoral Area C.
Motion, move Director Bales, second Director Adamson. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
6.5 is the proposed cemetery lot addition to Kamu's Indian Reserve Number Four in Electoral Area A.
For motion. Move Director Stobart, second Director Bales. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
6.6 is an information item. It's the Harrison Mills Neighborhood Plan Progress Update. Staff are happy to answer any questions.
For information only. Any discussion? Director Bales, go ahead.
A little bit forward to our discussion this morning is that I, although I'm glad that it's going forward to the public, I do have a little bit of a problem with the survey as written. But that's just certain questions I have trouble answering without details. And I think in future surveys, that could be easily remedied by having another category at the bottom of a survey with with explanation. That way, people can voice their their opinions, whether they might answer one way or another, depending on details. So I think that's really important because there's a few, a couple of questions I couldn't possibly move forward with if I answered the survey myself. So if there was another category, I could complete the survey. But without the other category, I didn't feel like I could complete the survey. That's just my own view on it and other people will probably have a totally different view.
Okay, thank you Director Bales for providing that direction to staff. Any further discussion? That is for information only, so we'll move forward. Go, thank you Ms. Kinaman.
Sure. So when moving to item 6.7, we have the Commercial Gravel Operation Permit 2021-01 for AJ Ventures Inc. in Electoral Area B. There is a motion for your consideration.
Looking for a motion.
Move motion.
Move Director Adamson, second Director Stobart. Discussion.
Dixon.
Go ahead Director Dixon.
Um, this is more, you can tell me if I'm out of line. It's more about gravel operations in general. So are there any, and I did try to look, expectations for AJ Ventures? So I've got a gravel operation up in my area. And the complaints I get all the time are about the gravel and the mess all over the main road. And it appears to be really challenging to deal with that. So I don't know if there's anything in place. Or are we able to put things in place where there's where they're cleaning up the more than main roads or the roads that they enter? Or I'm just wondering if there's a process around that.
Good. Thank you Director Dixon. I'll turn to Ms. Kinaman for that.
Sure. So I'm just looking, I see that Haseed is on the line with Graham. Perhaps our planning department would like to comment on our bylaws with respect to gravel operations.
Kinaman, through the chair. Public roadways are not our jurisdiction and we don't have an ability in our own permits to impose requirements in relation to roads. Gravel operations will require an access permit from the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And it would be a common requirement in an MOTI access permit that the gravel operation clean clean the the road in front of the pit because gravel gets trucked out of the site onto the road. And it's a nuisance and a danger to road users. So that's an issue we can bring forward to the ministry. And we should be able to make some progress on on that site.
I just, I have been, certainly for mine, been working with Modi or trying to. It appears to be a little bit challenging. And and I'm thinking in this case, I mean, at some point those gravel trucks, and there are many, I'm assuming, will enter the main roads. And if there are ways to even work together with Modi around that, it it might save a little bit of hassle over in that area. And the other question I have also is just, is there a reason that they are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, six days a week? Is that us or is that their desire?
That's the desire of the pit operator. And and they're able to do that if it's consistent with their mines permit from the Ministry of Mines. Our own commercial gravel operations bylaw doesn't establish hours of work limitations. It does set out noise limits that that change in the evening hours, they're reduced. But we don't regulate hours of operation. And so the proposed hours for this pit are are consistent with our bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you Director Dixon. Any further discussion?
Director Bales?
Go ahead Director Bales.
Just to Director Dixon's comments, I've found quite often that permits are amended when you're not paying, I mean, if you don't notice the ad in the back of a newspaper from the province end of things. So in quite, in a few, in more than one occasion, a gravel pit in my area has changed their hours and in different other regulations without me being aware or people being aware. And then people complain and then they say, well, why are they operating outside their hours? And then you go back and look at the permit and it's been amended. So unless you're looking at all the ads on every weekly paper, you might not notice that they've been amended for hours. And I'm just making that comment because sometimes it's the hours are given with the first permit, but the permits are often amended. So it's, you have to keep on your toes and it's hard to do quite often because newspapers, you can't always get a newspaper. There's not enough printed.
Thank you Director Bales for that direction. Any further discussion?
Adamson.
Director Adamson, go ahead.
Excuse me. This is a family business that's been established for a long time. I haven't had too many complaints in 13 years I've been elected. Just lately, they've had a few complaints on them because they, they're kind of part of the pipeline right now. So they're delivering stuff for the pipeline. And we've asked them, asked everybody involved with the pipeline to take the the Hunter Creek out to the highway and not drive through Leyton itself. So there's just been a couple, couple incidents where they drove through Leyton Law. But nothing serious. I haven't heard anything really bad about them and and in all those years that I've dealt with them. So I'm in favor of this.
Good. Thank you Director Adamson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Contrary, motion carries.
Thank you Chair Dickie. So the next item is 7.1, which is an information item. It's the Fire Underwriters Survey Impacts to Electoral Area Volunteer Fire Departments. This item has been brought forward in advance of our budget deliberations with each of you to give you some background on the Fire Underwriter Survey and how it affects all of our fire departments throughout all of the electoral areas. Happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to give you this research and background before we get into the thick of budget.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead Director Angar.
Oh, thank you for this background. Much appreciated. I'm looking at that and just wondering, a staff that are making the recommendations to the FUS, the Fire Underwriters Survey. We will be then notifying the the survey people that are taking the survey, what the sort of training and certification is of our volunteer fire departments. How do we deal with that?
Perhaps I see that we have both Trina Douglas and Stacy Parker on the line. Perhaps they want to speak about how they interface with the fire chiefs and the fire underwriters survey.
I can speak to that. So we're currently in discussions with Fire Underwriters Survey. They've provided us with forms to apply for extensions for any of our aged apparatus that are currently in in use. So we're going back and forth with them to work toward putting ourselves into compliance and ensuring that our ratings are maintained throughout the different service areas.
Hold up if I may Chair.
Yeah, go ahead Director Angar.
Thank you Ms. Douglas. I'm just looking at the list here in the backgrounder. Says the quality of training programs for the firefighter, including specialized training. And if, I think it may be a benefit, I'm not sure. You should let me know if it is a benefit to really relate this to the underwriters. Of, for instance, in my area, the firefighters have taken specialized training with BC Wildfire Service. They've been active on the ground up in the interior and doing great work to hide, try and mitigate the fire danger up there and are highly respected, I should say as well. Knowing that after my conversation with the fire chief, that they actually led a convoy of eight to 10 trucks. The name, the amount eludes me specifically, but it was approximately eight to 10 trucks. And our guys were the leads in that scenario. So I think that certainly brings a lot of confidence to my area, knowing they're highly trained. And I'm assuming that it would be a good thing to be relating that to the underwriters survey. Am I correct?
Absolutely. All of the information pertaining to training apparatus, equipment, number of firefighters, the level of training that they they offer and fire hydrants, availability to water. All of those factors are presented to our underwriters in their ratings determination.
Very good. And one final thought of the Fire Smart initiatives that we're undertaking in the valley and the FERD in general, our Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I'm assuming as well, that would be very good to let them know those, the content of the efforts that we're going to be going to.
Absolutely. All of all of our efforts are presented to our underwriters.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Good. Thank you Director Angar. Any further discussion? Director Dixon?
Thank you Mr. Chair. Probably through you to staff again. I just, if there could be some clarification, I believe this also covers the, I don't even know what to call it, the breathing apparatus and their and their clothing. And so it's twofold. What's the time timeline that they can use them? And I have had some of the fire chiefs say, of course, just to be clear, we, I want them to be, and we want them to be absolutely safe going into into a fire, obviously. But if the equipment is not really very well, very used, very used very often, does it degrade over time? Just during practices and stuff? And so I, what's the process around that?
Yes, there's a number of factors in evaluating gear. The SCBA, there are two, two separate stages to it. Depending on the equipment, it may be a 15-year lifespan or it could have an unlimited lifespan, as long as it's been passed testing. Clothing has a 10-year lifespan on it. So those are two pieces. Could I answer your questions?
Um, so I guess, yeah, my question really is, 10 years? And is it, is it unsafe after 10 years? Or is it just whether, even if it's kind of brand new? Or is the assumption it's been well-used during the 10 years and has lost its capability of keeping the firefighter safe?
Absolutely. In, with respect to that, I don't have information at this time as to whether or not I can apply for any extensions on that gear. What I do know is that the the life limits are regardless of use.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you Director Dixon. Any other discussion? Go ahead Director Bales and then Adamson.
Forward to Director Dixon's comments. I just brought it to mind that there was a fire truck up in the canyon that had aged out or did not pass its inspection. And that we were talking about loaning an Area C fire truck that, because they just got a new one. So I just wondered how that all came about and how it sort of. So I'm guessing that there's a year for aging out in, it sounds like from what your comments. And it's not for the amount of use. Because for instance, up in Hemlock, they have very few miles to go with their equipment. So it's kind of interesting if they age out by years as opposed to wear and tear. I just wanted to see if staff could comment on that.
Absolutely. So the aging out of the fire trucks by year is with respect to fire underwriters homeowner insurance rates. So at the, at the end of that life, the identified life through fire underwriters, it doesn't mean that the the equipment doesn't work if it's passed testing. It just means that there would be no credit in in grading for insurance purposes.
Good. Thank you Ms. Douglas and Director Dixon. Director Adamson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was with the aging of the the equipment. How do we dispose of that? Do we sell it? Do we give it to other fire departments that aren't accredited? But you know, still need this stuff? How do we get rid of this?
And there are a couple of options available. We generally put our vehicles up for auction. So if another agency was looking to purchase that, we could advise another agency that it was available at auction.
Good. Thank you Douglas. Go ahead Director Adamson. Hearing muted Director Adamson.
Confusing. Yeah, does that include the outfits they wear, like the, you know, the the gear? That 10 years, you said it, it doesn't count in saving any money for insurance. But do at 10 years, do we get the guys new, or guys and women, men and women, new ones? And if so, what do we do with the old ones? Do we, yeah, is it auctioned off as well or? Yeah.
Um, for the gear, that isn't a fire underwriters. That's, there's a couple of agencies that are associated, but it's essentially a work safety PC, health and safety concern. So we have donated to firefighters across borders. Sorry, that I'm not sure of the name of where we have donated equipment from other departments. But that is an option as well.
Good. Thanks again Ms. Douglas. Further discussion? Hey, that was an information item, I believe. So I'll turn things back to Ms. Kinaman.
Thank you so much. So we will move down to item 10, which is reports by Electoral Area Directors.
Okay, thank you. So starting off with Director Angar.
Thank you Chair. Well, UBCM is behind us. And I must say, I'm not big on the virtual conferences. It's a little more challenging. But certainly is good to see things still moving ahead. And that summer is over, thank goodness. And I think a lot of people are now, I see them working in their yards and cleaning up. And and my wife and I included are out there really preparing our yards much better even for next year. I've got some trees we're going to take out. And the impetus of creating a fire smart community is upon us. And I hope to move forward in a positive way in that regard. That's really all. We've seen the fishing pick up as well. This is the fishing season for sure. And I do note a, one of the recycle for used fishing line, recycled bins is now near the Onaway store, which is very helpful. Getting all the fish away from, getting all the fishing gear that is typically bound up in the rocks and things is now a place to deposit that and recycle it. Other than that, looking for fall season and lots of snow this year and to make life interesting. So thanks. That's all for me.
Good. Thank you Director Angar. Director Dixon.
Thank you Mr. Chair. Well, they're paving Columbia Valley Highway right now. And so that's been going on for three or four weeks, I think. And they still have a ways to go, but my perspective is they're doing a good job. It, I am actually really thankful that this did not end up happening in the summer because it's it's busy enough as it is. So that's coming on and it'll be great once it's finished. Last week I attended Fraser Basin Council as the rep from the board. And one of the meetings that was really quite interesting and I'm hoping to get some more information on, because I think Director Angar, you'll be, we'll all be interested in this. They did a presentation on visitor use and management strategies that is connected with the realizing undrip protocols. But it was more for the sea to sky area. And it just really talked about how well they worked together with First Nations people and really all partner groups to talk about what what they're looking for for their area and how they're going to manage visitors. So I inquired a little bit about that because I think it's something, well, certainly it's something I'm interested in. And right now, it's, this is the first project. So there might be a framework coming out that that's their hope, is that they'll have a framework that other other areas can use. So I want to keep an eye out for that because it it's a very similar concern that too many visitors trampling everything inside and and really the environment's being impacted. So there is that going on. There's also just a little bit of a discussion around the Litton Litton Recovery. And Fraser Basin Council has been asked. And uh Fraser Basin Council has been asked to provide a little bit of support for that till the end of Chris, uh till the end of December, the end of the year. And uh just sort of um just the initial plan and what can that recovery look like and uh. And so that is going on right now. And as you can well imagine, that's a a huge project. This Saturday, we've got uh the give or take happening up here, which is uh thirty kilometer run or relay. Around uh all around the lake. And uh so that will be kind of interesting to see. Um. Think it's gonna be quite wet that day, so we'll see how that that is working and um. The other part is last week, uh end of September, I guess it was um. Uh when we had the very heavy rains, we had some. Mud in Hatchery Creek, which is a creek that uh up here my area enters into Swelter Creek and. The concern, of course, is where's all this mud coming from? But also it's a spawning season and so. Uh a lot of people up here, including our class committee, are really trying to look out for the spawning salmon and make sure that we can do everything we can to support them. Um so we, I sent off a few pictures to Miniature Environment and actually we got a response. And so we've got a meeting. Um this Friday because to find out um. How is all the silt getting into this creek and uh? Uh I guess we'll go from there just to see if we need to contact some of the industry uh in the neighborhood to see. Um if things can improve. So we'll see what happens from that meeting, but I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Good. Thank you Director Dixon. Uh Director Stilber.
I'm nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you Director Stilber. Director Adamson.
Yes, thank you. Um a couple of things. I went to Sunshine Valley Heritage Days on Sunday. In in Sunshine Valley, obvious. It was a full day, started at um ten with the parade and then it went on. Uh they had some old cars there and 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 um they had a barbecue and then they had a a tea for volunteers. And then they had a supper at night. It was great day, great day there. And and the museum was open, of course. We just started to build the bridge in front of my house, uh replace it, which is good. It's been needing it for a long time. Every time the heavy trucks go over. You could really hear the the bridge move. So they're working on that to tell me it's going to be. Um they're going to work now till about January and then stop because of the freezing and then come back in the spring and finish it. Which everybody's looking forward to that. That's good. Um passports. Okay, now I um this. Inspecting for passports. I was at a meeting um one of the organizations here in town and. It just caused such a uh a scene between neighbors. It was like, you know, like. Some people haven't got the the shot for whatever reason they had chose not to do it. And and with the. Members of the organization having to check passports, it it caused quite a bunch of uh aggravation, actually to small town like ours. Um I don't know what to say about it. It's just the way it is, I guess, but it it is dividing people. Thanks.
That's a hot issue. Uh thank you Director Adamson. Director Bales.
Yeah, so I had a good uh homeowners meeting up in Hemlock uh. And staff, uh various staff did really good presentations. Uh one thing that really struck a chord was uh Tarina. Who did emergency uh presentation. And I think people really, it really uh. Struck a chord that she went through how many pe- volunteers there are up there and. And then asked the question uh of how many are in the community at any one time. Uh and there was only two that actually lived in the community and out of those two. Uh quite often they'd be out for groceries, which means being off the mountain. So uh there is no set. Uh policy that there'd always be a volunteer up in Hemlock. So it really did strike a chord with. With the audience. I was looking forward and not at the audience, but that's what I was told and then um but also. I piggybacked on to that a little bit by uh letting people know that there are grants and aids available for emergency preparedness supplies. And they really took took to that to heart and immediately started working with a committee. Subcommittee on their um homeowners to to look at that and to think about what supplies would be needed. As I think it especially strikes a chord after their emergency last year. Where they're actually flying people out of the community. So. Uh so that was great and I would highly recommend Emil Anderson's guy that they had to do a talk. It was at the end of a very long meeting and he promised to be quick, which he lied. He wasn't that quick. He rambled on, but he was incredibly funny in a, in a kind of uh stoic way. Uh he explained why the mountain was like a donkey. And he said it was never, it he said it was never uh meant to be a tourist road. It was a logging road. And uh and he went on to say you can have a donkey and you can train it really well, but. A donkey is still a donkey and not a horse. So that that really lightened up the audience after a very long meeting. And he was, I noted that a lot of people did talk to him after about uh. Different issues to do with paving and things like that, but uh. I would highly recommend if you have uh road issues in your area, he was a great guy to have um to for a long meeting. Anyway, I guess that's it for now.
Good. Thank you Director Bill. I took a run up to Hemlock Valley. I noticed a lot of work was being done on the road. Was that uh new surface or paving or is that just some work on the existing surface?
They did get uh uh they are resurfacing the first part of the road, which was already surfaced. Uh Emil Anderson's guy did talk about paving. The town would help with the dust suppression. And I would agree, but also there's a huge need and this was brought up in the meeting as well as since the meeting. And after the meeting, I talked to people who were very concerned about the lack of water infrastructure and sewage infrastructure. That is hampering uh build outs to a degree and it's also a big concern with fire suppression. So whether there's enough water and pressure from the lack of bigger pipes or um. To to provide the water with all the build outs. Uh the pressure has really gone down. I've heard that from several residents. So yeah, the pave, sorry, I was off track, but the paving uh was a big issue. It's always been a big issue for Hemlock. But it's still, they're only repaving what was there. And and I think up top it would be great to pave, but I would. Think it'd be also good to get some of the infrastructure in the ground uh before paving. I'm not sure technically. Whether it matters or not, but uh that's just a thought and was brought up by Emil Anderson guy.
Good. Thank you Director Bales. Director Davidson.
Uh thank you Chair. Uh pretty much quiet. Uh was on a, one thing worth mentioning though was on a. Call um earlier today with uh N L A Bob Deef and Michelle Chapman from the Mission Environmental Steady Society. And Michelle's been talking about some of the challenges her uh group has. They go out. And ju- in conjunction with the four wheel drive um clubs and do cleanup mostly up in the uh. Forest Service Road areas, um both in uh State West within the city of Mission and. Call it State East, which is electoral area F. Um but at any rate, wh- what she's reporting is that. Uh the the uh refuse and stuff such from roadside target shooting is as bad as it's ever been. And apparently State West has uh improved dramatically. And probably as a result of stepped up enforcement issue, uh enforcement efforts in State West. Uh the people who would go there to shoot are now hopping over to the other side of the lake um and uh uh. You know, doing roadside target shooting. So we know we talked about enforcement and um. Conservation officers and challenges and we'll get back to us, but it was just, it was just, I just wanted to share the uh. What I thought was quite interesting was that, yeah, you enforce it in one area and then people will move somewhere else where it's not enforced. So it's it's an ongoing challenge. But uh other than that, it's been very quiet. Thank you.
Good. Thank you Director Davidson and uh. Uh Popcom, I was going to say was quiet, but actually the the hills of Popcom are alive. The sound of nail guns and excavators. Um I, we all still have a lot of construction taking place. Uh on a sadder note, uh I note that our dear friend uh. Um past Director for Area C Alex Niemi is experiencing some health challenges and. I wanted to thank staff. I believe uh something was sent from the F E R D to show our care. And uh and also hoping that uh Director Raymond feels better soon. So. I have nothing else to add, so I'll turn things back to us. Oh, Director Adamson, go ahead.
Yeah, just uh on uh Director Hughes um. Point there about um shooting. Didn't we pass a few years back? Where we mapped out all the, all the areas and you couldn't shoot within four hundred feet of the road? I thought we passed that years ago. I just wondered if we did, my memory is correct. Is there a way to enforce that?
Yeah, yeah, I believe you're correct about that, Director Adams, and I'll get Miss Director Davidson to comment.
Um yeah, thank you Chair. Absolutely. Regulation is there. It provincial regulation, it's all um. In the Wildlife Act, which specifies uh shooting restrictions. It's just not enforced.
I think uh Director Angar is the resident expert on how many C O's we have, but for this. Area the size of Texas, I think we have two C O's. Isn't that correct, Director Angar?
Yeah, my last uh look was uh two C O's from Surrey to Boston Bar. So definitely undermanned and I've been pounding that drum for a lot of years and without much success. I think part of the challenge is too that they they uh the the, some of the C O's moved out of the area simply because they couldn't afford a home here. And uh the cost of living has gone up dramatically. So challenges all around, but uh we'll keep after it. I do note that in my area. Majority of the backlog, logging roads where we were having issues, I do hear more gunshots creeping back as well, but not to the extent they were previously. So. Um the word has to get out again that some of these areas are definitely out of bounds. We'll keep working at it. Thanks.
Good. Thank you Directors Angar and Adamson. Uh turning things back to Ms Kineman.
Thank you Chair Dickey. So uh next we would just move to public question period for items relevant to the agenda. And I will look to Jamie Van Ness to see if we have any members of the public in the boardroom today or if we have anybody on the line.
Good. Thank you Ms Van Ness. So.
Chair Dickey, Chair Dickey, I didn't actually, we couldn't hear her on this end, so. I'm assuming there's no one on the line. That's what she said.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that. The technology is great when it works. Uh so Chair Dickey, that would take us to a motion for adjournment.
Looking for a motion. Move Director.
Dixon.
Stilber and Dixon move seconds. All those in favor? Contrary, motion carries. Thank you Directors for a long day and thank you staff for a long day.
Great. Thank you.
Well.